Good morning, my name is Chinazaprivela, representing Adama Zee TV. On this auspicious occasion of the zonal and national public hearing in reference to the 1999 constitution review. This constitution was brought into play after a long time of military rule. And this constitution has been what has kept the country for a very long time. However, there have been criticisms on its display of various gaps in the service to Nigeria as a whole. Hence, the need for a thorough review as is being carried out today. And we are here live at the International Conference Centre to witness and to hear what the people have to say about this. Thank you. Good morning. Please can you tell us your name?
Okay, I'm Dr. Kenneth Okuru, MNI.
Alright.
I'm a convocative pediatrician.
Nice to meet you sir.
And I'm here for the zonal hearing on the review of the 1999 constitution by the House of Representatives. And I'm here to present a memo from the National Assembly of Sidox Paris Confertility.
Alright, thank you very much sir. So, what is the content of your proposition?
Yes, as a matter of fact, we appreciate the fact that the National Assembly is making effort to review the 1999 constitution, which to all intents and purposes is not a perfect document. It was delivered by the military with a lot of military psych and Nigerians have been yearning for a people's constitution. So basically, we have at a mine some areas that we feel should be reviewed or amended so that we can have the full benefits of a presidential system of government. Or in the alternative, perhaps revert to the regional system that we started with in 1960. So, in the areas of the federal structure, we stand for devolution of more powers to the states. At the moment, power is concentrated at the centre. The federal government takes a whole chunk of what goes on in the country. Whereas the states, who are closer to the people, are left with just a few. A whole lot of items are in the exclusive legislative list for the National Assembly and the state assemblies. And situations where the legislation by the state assembly in a matter that is in the concurrent list is also legislated by the National Assembly, that was National Assembly now overrides. So, we feel that more power should be given to states. More items from that exclusive list should be devolved to the states to legislate on. So that we have better value for all these positions.
Okay, alright.
Then apart from that also, in terms of fiscal federalism, the chunk of the resources go to the federal government.
That's true.
What is left with the states, it's not enough for the states to live up to their responsibilities. So, the revenue derivation formula should be reviewed in such a way and manner that more money go to the states instead of the whole chunk of the money being with the federal government. Unlike what used to happen in the first republic when the parliamentary system of government was operated, states' regions had a good chunk of what is derived from their regions. And there was some kind of healthy competition. Because the resources of each region, they maximise it and make a contribution to the centre. But right now, everything goes to the centre and they now just give some handouts to the states. So, if we can go back to that, let states maximise their resources and make contributions to the centre. That will be better. A whole lot of states have mineral resources, but it's all federal government, federal government, federal government. So, these are some of the areas there. And then of course, the local government should be fully autonomous. Inasmuch, as it's not part of the federating units of the federal government, but the local government should have full autonomy.
And my name is Mr. Royal Ayenet, Enzo Doctor. I am a cosmonaut, named after our game and the check my thought of what was a game. I want to speak on two issues. I greet the chairman of this panel and my own brother, Chief Chinengu Okafor, and other members of the House of Rave that are here. I also greet my colleagues, the Igbo's and the Igbo's that are here. I am going to speak on two areas. The first is the traditional issue and the second is on the women. And how the women will be given separate constitution and separate and special seats. Now, I want to start this way. The traditional ruler is an institution created by law. What we need is for us to be recognized and they give them the constitutional role. And our constitutional role should comprise the areas that we have to perform our duty legally. It has not been defined. The traditional rulers, they don't treat criminal matters. We treat several matters. And these several matters, they don't end in the palace. Sometimes, the plaintiff or the defendant may have their own complaint, which will be removed from the palace to other any of the judicial levels like High Court or Magisterate Court. What we are now saying is, let the traditional rulers have constitutional role, which will enable the traditional rulers to perform deliberately in their respective palaces or their respective communities. Two, that the traditional rulers, they have rights to perform their certain issues.
So much noise, so much noise.
The traditional issue constitution. This panel should look into the sipperance of the traditional rulers. It is amazing and very surprising that the traditional rulers don't have anything to go home or to think about. Their society is very poor. Secondly, this panel should look into the welfare of the traditional rulers. They don't have security anywhere. They should be given security both in their palace and when they are going out for official duties. We will have money to pay for all the security issues. So, the government should make it possible that every traditional ruler in this country should be given a police officer to take care of his movements. Another one, that the traditional rulers should be allowed... Excuse me. That the traditional rulers should be allowed to have full authority in this community. Then, on the issue of the women. The women we are now talking about, we want them to have a special constitution. Secondly, they should be given special seats. And that is how they should be allowed so that they will take part in the government.
And today, I give this goodwill message on behalf of my traditional rulers here present and those absent. I speak for the welfare of Ndewe generally in the state, generally in the country. Now, traditional rulers in 1979, their functions were removed from the constitution. And since then, traditional rulers have been functioning without proper government recognition and backing. And I believe that it's a loss to the country. Because traditional rulers are the ones on ground. And the people are still believing and depending on us in security, in tradition and otherwise. Now, to give you an example, when the Europeans came, they sought the help of traditional rulers. That was why they appointed waran chiefs, even in communities that didn't have traditional rulers. Because they knew that only the traditional rulers, even at that time, when there was no government like we have now, were the ones through whom they would reach the people. Now, that has been prevalent from time immemorial and still relevant even till today. That's why the removal of the functions of traditional rulers from the constitution. The people still believe in us, they still come to us in times of trouble, in times of trials and tribulations. Therefore, that relevance, whoever suggested and whoever agreed to remove the functions of the traditional rulers from the constitution, made great mistakes. Because this is all about, it is deprivation. Total deprivation, not just for the traditional rulers, but for the masses. Because if you look at the traditional rulers, I'll use Adam Brezett for an example. We, the traditional rulers, come from all walks of life. We have retired army generals, doctors, engineers. For instance, in my committees, the one that represents us for media and communication is a retired media consultant. So, it is in various aspects of our lives and disciplines. Therefore, our functions are undermined, underestimated and underused. So, I put it to our people, the legislators, that it is very, very necessary to restore the functions of the traditional rulers and give us constitutional roles so that we may do better jobs and engage properly in the governance of the nation generally. It is to the best interest of the people, from the governors down to the man and woman in the grassroots. It will be a greater, much greater service to the people. I thank you very much.
We do not want anybody to play with our future. We want it to remain in the exclusive list. Minimum wage is the least amount you can pay to workers in Nigeria, not maximum. It's not defining the money, it's just telling you the basic amount. In America, they have minimum wage. In other countries of the world, they have minimum wage. You cannot come to Nigeria and leave it for states to decide what to pay or local governments to decide what to pay. They can decide, but they should not go below minimum wage. And we want the law to be fortified in such a way that it would criminalise abuse of minimum wage. Any government or even local government chairman that refuses to comply with this law, let the law define punishment for it. Please, because of the issue of time, we are going to submit the details of what we have here. Thank you.
Principally, we wouldn't like to waste much of our time because our organised people have presented the people of Nigeria. And as a parliamentary, it says I should tell you that he is always with you. Because yeah, he is costumers and he will always give you the needed cooperation to achieve the desired goals. Thank you very much.
It is profound in why we are here to listen to our people. I want to on this position, at this time, to introduce once again our lead consultant for this Zoom 8 Southeast Public Hall. With the person of right honourable Sobi Okuchus. He is our consultant, he will take everything along and view in preambles and of the entire hall of which we pay. So, we will now call up on those as rich staff who present their papers in 30 seconds, 1 minute, 2 minutes and this many. Thank you.
Your Excellency, your Excellency, the traditional rulers are here to support women and make sure that this bill is created.
Thank you.
Special seat will be created for women.
Thank you.
For veterans, states and assembly.
Thank you.
As you can see, that has that number of words. That's number one. Number two, tell me why it would not make sense to divide that local government into two. Probably into Ndeka and Ocha, the local government. And North and South, and Ocha, North. And South, then Ndeka and Ocha, the local government. That's a suggestion I think we should keep on the table I think about. The other point of which I will conclude is that sometime in the history of this country, we have four regions. Today, one region has 19 states, true or false? I'm asking, true or false?
True.
One region has more states than the rest of the population? So, the question of equity is not always about who, it's already in the constitution. Whatever conditions you give for creation of state was given by somebody, true or false? We have landmass, isn't it? Supposing somebody has said three mass. How many trees do you have in your area, determine whether you get a state. In those states, we have about 15 states. If you say water mass, Bayasa will have 90.
And my colleagues, the chairman.
Enzo, where is your memo?
Enzo. All we are going to say today are contained in this document we will be presenting. But for the purposes of emphasis and giving the time repetition, I want to plead with the framers of this law to jettison the idea of removing or moving labour and labour matters from exclusive list to concurrent list. That would do a whole lot of evil on the workers if it is done. We want to pray with you to jettison this idea. Remember, it is the same workers that you are trying to decentralise, the laws that are guiding them, that bring all of you into the position of authorities. And we are willing to do that subsequently. So, we are praying with you not to play with the labour and labour matters by the force.
A situation where the National Assembly will grant or pass a deal granting autonomy to the executives. And they themselves will be allowed to be thrown up and down by any person that who feels and give with them. So, that immunity, that immunity should be granted to both states and state assemblies, leadership of state assemblies and the National Assembly. So, we, on the other, like the fact about the reforms in the judicial system, we are completely with you in your, you know, recommendations and proposals for judicial reforms. So, with this and because of the time, short time given to me, on electoral reforms, let me also talk about where a proposal is being made that local government elections should have Nigeria independent or national independent electoral commission. It is our stand that that should be allowed for the states. Because it could be eroding on the strength of the states and the speaker and the member of the state assembly. There are certain functions that could be written out from such things and done. And then the activities are concentrated and rejected. So, we are asking that you allow that as our proposal that is allowed for being a state function. Then with that, you will see on the demand of state police, we are 100% behind state police. Today, everyone is viewed as one of the safest states, not just in the southeast, across Nigeria. Because what is happening is that each state, each community is in charge of their security. If any security or insecurity is coming out, what the government does is to ask people who are in charge of that place, who are the stakeholders, the traditional rulers, what is happening in your area?
Thank you.
So, with all this and we are behind you and we will always be with you.
Thank you sir.
You can see my chair there now. Thank you very much, thank you. That brings out that the all known men are known if we apply community policy. Community policy is not to deploy police services to the community. It is a security arrangement where all the members of the community are involved. And we have details here, how I wish I was given more members, but thanks for that. But let me put this again, I have been in Israel and they have the people's army, they have reserves and the Impostation Authority have their own reserves. I wanted us to get every community, to threaten every child, male and female, from the age of 12. And they will constitute the people's army that will be kidnappers, all those.
A situation where the National Assembly will grant or pass a deal granting autonomy to the executives and they themselves will be allowed to be thrown up and down by any person that who feels and give within them. So that legislative immunity, that immunity should be granted to both states and the leadership of State Assembly and the National Assembly. We, on the other, like the fact about reforms in the judicial system, we are completely with you in your, you know, recommendations and proposals for judicial reforms. So with this and because of the time, short time given to me. On electoral reforms, let me also talk about where a proposal is being made that local government elections should have Nigeria independent or national independent Electoral Commission. It is our stand that that should be allowed for the states because it could be eroding on the strength of the states and the Speaker and the Member of State Assembly, there are certain functions that could be written out from such things and done and then the activities are concentrated and rejected. So we are asking that you allow that as our proposal that is allowed for being a state function. Then with that, you will see on the demand of state police, we are 100% behind state police. Today, Ebony is being rated as one of the safest states, not just in the southeast, across Nigeria. Because what is happening is that each state, each community is in charge of their security. If any security or insecurity is coming out, what the governor does is to ask people who are in charge of that place, who are the stakeholders, the traditional rulers, what is happening in your area?
Thank you.
So with all this, we are behind you and we will always be with you.
Thank you.
You can see my chair there.
Thank you.
Back to very much. Thank you. Thank you very much.
That brings out that the old men are known if we apply community policy. Community policy is not deployed police service at the community. It is a security arrangement where all the members of the community are involved. And we have details here. How I wish I was given more members in times of time. Let me put this again. I have been in Israel and they have the people's army. They have reservers and the Impostation Army have their own reservers and wanted us to get every community, to train every child, male and female, from the age of 12. And they will construct the people's army that will be kidnappers. All those people who are terrorists are not there in communities that has that kind of sophisticated training. They simply need arms at the time it is required.
Thank you.
I want to... Thank you. There are many, okay. Okay, my summary is that, let me leave that one. Beautiful presentation by the Chairman, when he put in more tests that talked about separation of powers. I'm a political scientist. If we come to separation of powers and you don't give financial authority to both legislature and judiciary, you cannot separate any power. The executive has increased the soft functions of the other two arms. So in my details, I have suggested how this can be done. That's of separating the financial autonomy of the interior of Gubwa and the great arms of government. And I want to say again that in the judicial arrangements, which are a year, which is alternative dispute resolution. People in Rwanda killed all their judges and lawyers. They have come back to what they call.
This goal. To the presentation from Ebony's state, I will just take a summary. And my summary will weigh so much on local government creation and reforms. Under the local government creation, Ebony has applied for additional 13 local governments. New local governments to be created out of the present 13 local governments. Secondly, on the reform about local government autonomy, we support local government autonomy, co-marily. Our reservation is on the protection of some sections in the local government autonomy, which includes the protection of teachers' salary and welfare, the protection of the primary health. And in asking for the protection of teachers' salary and their welfare, there are others of units or agencies created out of 1976 reforms of the local government. And in there, you will see that some agencies like the Local Education Authority, Ubeb, Ubeb, all these agencies were created to protect some sections, tighter sections of the society, like the primary schools, the secondary schools and so on. So all these things were taken into consideration in granting the autonomy to local governments. There are certain creations. The position of Ebony's state as far as southeast is concerned is that there should be a balance first, that is the justice. We are seeking for justice first. Let us be given one additional state.
Distinguished and honourable members of the House of Representatives Committee on Constitutional Amendments, my name is John Mniyamor and I speak on behalf of the government of Addada State. Addada State consists of the North Senatorial Zone of Enugu State and EC Medical Department. It presently has seven local governments. We started this movement after the creation of Enugu State. We saw a significant injustice in the creation of Enugu State and only Ebony State out of northern Igbo. Three states were created in southern Igbo and only Enugu State was created with John Ebony. And we felt this was unfair. Demographically, it was worse. In the present Enugu State, Addada State consists of 56% of Enugu State. If you take away issues on local government, Addada State will be 52% of Enugu State. But we have one senator representing Enugu State. We have six local governments, notwithstanding that we are more than 50% of Enugu State. The injustice that is occurring. We approached the National Assembly under the leadership of Senator David Ma and subsequently under the leadership of Senator Dibra Imdawah. We also approached the last Constitutional Conference headed by the former Chief Justice of Nigeria, Justice Ebe Stutihi. That conference, its report recommended Addada State as a state to be created from the southeast. In this demand that we are presenting to you, Mr. Chairman, there is a 100% unanimity of our political representatives. And if the chairman is being discredited, several are being boosted to sustain livestock market for its lead for the whole of Nigeria. We have now look everyone see in this one where there is a confluence of the River Niger and River Bena. Our manpower resources. I'm sorry, the only thing they do is when they go to school. And because of that, seek located University of Nigeria in Sogba. And so we walk from our father's house to the university. Mr. Chairman, Addada State will give us an opportunity to embrace development. We have a very progressive group of Enugu State now who have brought tremendous progress to us, one of which is smart schools. In Enugu State, beginning from next year, every child qualified to go to Kibegat School will be able to have pupital education from this age now. The tragedy of Addada State, however, is that because we have only seven local governments, in spite of our population, in my ward, a child will need to travel several miles every morning in order to embrace our governor's smart school. My ward starts all the way from the way that the local government to our boundaries with Nikeli and there's a primary school in Nikeli. So a child in my ward, if that primary school is located in Nikeli, will travel eight miles. If it is located in a mile, if you halfway through, it will travel four miles. No mother will lead his child to go four miles to go to a school, a primary school. Distinguished and honourable members of House of Representatives. I don't want you to waste time. You have made our proposal. You are vast with this amendment process. You have had debates on it and that is why this committee was writing. We've written proposals. We beg you. Time comes when God gives you a position that imitates His image so that you have judgment from your fellow men as you are back on this path. Please, we are the crowd of us and we just... It is my honour and responsibility.
The Chairman of this Honourable Committee, the Representatives of the House of Representatives, we want to thank you for this opportunity to speak and lend our voice. We have our programs, all our contributions written down. My name is Ovi Agbado Princess Suwo, a member of the State House of Assembly in Enugu. And this is a coalition of women who are supporting the reserve seat bill. We have about five states in the southeast. And out of the five states, we have just Enugu, Ebony and Anambra. With two, two members in the House of Assembly and one in Anambra State. Not for Igbo, not for Abia. We say that this is not good for the parliamentary system. We are pleading that when this bill, because we know that the House of Representatives already, because they started and proposed this bill, we believe that to see the light of the day. We just want to make an additional proposition and plead with the political party members here that when this bill is passed into law, that you please assimilate it into your party constitution and make sure that seats are reserved, not just in the parliament, but in the executive arm of your parties, different parties in the state and in Nigeria as a whole. Thank you very much and God bless you.
Thank you. Thank you. The Chairman will now receive it. Go ahead, he's here. Thank you. It's okay now. I want, I support you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. So that we can have time for other presentation. You please. Please, bro. It's okay. It's okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you, sir. Thank you, man. Mine, as the Chief, as the host of the Congressional Assembly of Enugu State, I'm thanking all of you, even the President of Philanthropic of Nigeria, for giving this concept, this ideology, to bring men and women of great report to come here to Enugu Assembly and the Modified Assembly Center to give this an attention. All this money you spent, all the time you spent coming here, you are going to be paid by God. Remember, the only person that pays is God. I cannot pay you back. Mine, on behalf of the Traditionalists of Enugu State, I'm thanking all of you, even the veterans that are here, someone like AA Madweke. It's someone like the other S S Governor of Gubwa of Igbo State. I hi dona Tuchu. All the veteran men that Igbo have in their mood, all, most of the people here. My brother has spoken, traditional institution is the area you have the worst number of professionals in the whole world. Anything you want, you practice is there in traditional institution. How can we begin to neglect that? I'm thanking you people because I know in your minds, really done, because some of you come in to be traditionalists. If you want to make a place, go stop for you guys. So please, as some of you like the traditional institution, like the Chief Assembly Title giving and how the committees are being raised, being groomed and raised up. Everybody has, when they started, they're from their king and the chief. Our own is not different. I know, that's why I'm talking from the ground of, thanks to them because I know it's a road and shrine. It was a mistake and anything, what do is what do well. That's why we're not highlighting much on that because we know better. This is a progressive Nigeria from the government and thanking all of you. My own, like I said, is gratefulness and grateful heart. It has to be done now. It is now or never. So we have to do the right thing. And all of these we're talking about, state creation, equity and justice. You know that most great men are creatures of circumstance. And be remembered by those impressive deeds that remain monumental, unquote from some professor in Sopra University in Israel. So what you do now is what you're going to be remembered for. Is that about how many millions of Nigeria you have in your bank account? It's those impressive deeds that remain monumental. So I thank you people. I thank the governor of Enugu State for giving this robust appeal and the members of the press, the members of the military, the members of the executives and all the committee members here, all the traditionalists here present with me. Even from their state, welcome them and thank them and God bless all of you.
I most of me acknowledge the dignitaries here present. I want to talk specifically on funding of primary education in Nigeria. The teachers of Nigeria are fully in support of the local government autonomy. But as we know very well, many local governments have limited revenue. Revenue of local governments is always very limited and dwindling, not stated and not uniform. So the teachers are of the opinion that the burden of funding primary education, including building of schools and paying of child salary, of child salary should be shifted to the state and the federal government only. Most states are already doing good in that perspective by building schools. But in terms of child salaries, there's problem in the many local government areas. That's why in here, there's some government areas can pay, while others cannot pay, of child salary. So we want to say that in as much as the state government and federal government is willing to build these schools, we ought to also take up the burden of paying primary school teachers' salary and in the state and federal government to take care of that. If you go, if you watch, most teachers will retire and not pay their pensions and graduates because local government cannot fund that. So the possibility will appreciate the National Assembly for this great service. If you can shift the burden of funding primary education to the states and to the federal government because most government areas cannot fund that. So we want to thank you for one time, we make our decision submission. I want to urge you please to remember that the teachers, primary school teachers and primary education is the grassroots of our international system. If you can write their name. If you can write their name. If you cannot write their name. Thank you so much. God bless you.
My name is Barista Heli Kabo. I'm right here, the spokesperson for Women and Political Position Technical Working Group, representing southeast, which comprise Enugu, Anambra and Ebony State. We are here in support of the special seat bill under the ongoing constitutional review of this great nation. The Technical Working Group, when they got the wind of the special seat bill, we analyzed the bill. We went to all the communities in Anambra State, in Enugu State, in Ebony State. We covered the three senatorial districts. Then we gathered up to a million physical endorsement from adult men and women across the three states. Now, I would like, Mr. Chairman, to permit me to submit all the physical endorsement of them from the three states. And then, while we are on it, please, I want to ask the men of Enugu State, Anambra State and Ebony State, together with the women, I want to ask you just two simple questions. And I want to do that in Igbo. Adujungambo, ulucholo, keo mwea ochepechi, makumo wa, ne efi ti, ngi, ne meyu, ngoko bo dae na Nigeria? Adujungambo, ulucholo, ta, ocha apuriche, ta ne na iwu, ngoko bo dae na Nigeria, tukota bayo no? Miss, the Chairman and the honourable members of the House of Representatives, you have heard from the horse's mouth. I just want to take us back just to one scenario. I happened to come back from Kenya yesterday when I met a woman parliamentary by name Honorable Milia Odiyango. She confirmed that Kenya had affirmative action in her constitution. She confirmed that Kenya had affirmative action in her constitution and thirty percent of women representative. When you look at the constitution and the countries across Africa, you will discover that Nigeria is at the last ladder of female political representation in the parliament.
Thank you.
When you have a child that is not ready enough to responsibility,
Thank your presentation.
You enforce strategies to make the child to break up.
Thank you.
Therefore, we are asking that you say yes to the special seat deal. It is a win for all Nigeria.
Thank you. Aluta. Victoria. Amanda. We are here to do this presentation on behalf of both the President of Nigeria Labour Congress and the President General of United International Congress of Nigeria. And I speak on behalf of the President of TUC. When I finish, the NLC Chairman, our Chairman here, will also speak on behalf of the President of NLC. So concerning the Constitution Review, I wouldn't want to waste much of your time because we have it as a document that we're going to present to the committee. But we want the House, the National Assembly, to do us a favor by bringing up a constitution that will clearly represent the desire of the people. And let's go this way, the first emphasis we want to lay on this Constitution Review has to do chapter two of the Constitution of the Federal Republic of Nigeria. The chapter two of the Federal Republic Constitution says, and it makes it clear, on the issue of national ethics, economic objectives and environmental objectives. And we believe that if you make such statement on the issue of the protection, protection of integrity of this nation, that it is not justiceable, neither is it enforceable, it is just a general statement. So please, we want a constitution that will enforce that chapter two. So that if you're a leader, if you're a governor and you tell us that you are coming in to do a road and you didn't do the road, we will have the right to take you to court. If you need to protect Nigerians and you don't have the capacity or you fail to protect Nigerians, we will have to take you to court. If the law says that it is duty of government to provide social and economic protection for the people and you fail to do so, you must be answerable. There must be sanction for anything that affairs to deliver in accordance to his political promise. So that we not continue having promises that can never be fulfilled. For Nigeria to function, we must criminalize promises that cannot be kept. We put it in our constitution that if you come to lead Nigeria and the constitution says that Nigeria must protect its citizens and the territories of this country, if we have a government that cannot, it means that government has failed constitutionally and can be taken to court. So we want well-defined chapter two. Then, the issue of minimum wage. When we talk about minimum wage, we know today that there is a sinister plan to remove minimum wage.
For NSCDC, Assistant Plan and Transparency International on Defence and Security in Nigeria, especially in the southeast.
And members, house quality, and state pressure. So then, that sounds better to the people and the grassroots because that is where the court drives. The people are the grassroots. Thank you so much as we believe that you are going to give us a favorable constitution. Thank you. Please, I will have a copy of our, of our document to be submitted here. To show that there are parts of our, our support. We have sent us something, the Central National Assembly Center, outside, two minutes. A good Nigerian initiative. Let them come and present, so that they will, they come, remember them.
The tradition of other countries will find another. He brings a little bit closer to the environment. But on each of the other states, we can find issues, and then have a lot of ignorance there. In fact, I did today, we definitely want to help them, to help them to understand, every move.
Please, I believe that our problems will be difficult to be moderated. So I am calling that whatever the houses, the two chambers are doing, please lend more attention to giving to traditional institutions. Again, so many laws have been made in Nigeria Constitution have been insisted. Sometime, not all the contents of the Constitution.
House of Representatives members here present. Have been to this place. Um, every standard existing protocol. My name is Diguem Chidugun Iweta. As I was at the time of Obosi Kingdom, Nana Mra State. And I'm here, thank you. I'm here to talk about my kingdom. I am the chairman of the Traditional Relations Council of Abadam.
So what the people need is our interest. So justify it to the interests of our people. Okay, I said my name is Robo, I'm a member of the South East.
We want to call on the NSDC. Known as Ebonaka World and not a Pamo de Le World. So we stand and believe that if this is reflected already in the House of Representatives, it will make a great impact and indeed will cause a lot of changes. Thank you. The way you love me so. Thank you. Why can't we be put to head all the members of Cosmaredor Courts in Nigeria? Security is local. You will agree with me that every traditional ruler knows members of his community. We know the criminals, we know those that do not conform, we know those that are ruthless. We know those that commit crime, which I tell you history of both families. So we can at any given time single out criminals in our community, give us a role in securing our community and we make sure that our communities are secure. There are several things that we do and I know that you can give us help of our security apparatus. Land administration. Every land, especially heritage lands. Because, because we are custodians of our heritage lands. Somebody arrived during famine season. And this is we bring peace and this peace is all we need for this country to move. Give traditional rulers roles as land administrator. As they do move to do. They can't hear our voice, they can't hear our voice. As they do move down.
Antika Scolar operates without dedicated local government presence, resulting in administrative inefficiency, poor service delivery, urban planning breakdown and mutual destruction. In response, this document proposes the creation of five new local government areas within the metro police to bring governance closer to the people, improve service delivery, enhance grassroots participation and ensure fair resource allocation. They propose local governments, brood, I read one, Enugu West, number two, Enugu North East, number three, Enugu South South, number four, Enugu Southwest. This solution offers to constitutional review committee to recognize the historical oversight and correct impact governance is proportionate, the presentation is just and the spirit of our pet rising up here. Thank you for your time and may the firm wisdom guide you in all your decisions. That's very much.
Okay, through the chair. I'm Sam Al Protocol. My name is Ambassador Donnie Joy Maman. Executive Director, Hero Women Foundation and the President for Women, Support Women, Human Empowerment and Mentorship Initiative. I am presented under the auspices of Women in Politics Forum, a memorandum and position of female politicians and members of men in politics forum with a nationwide bill for an act alter the provisions of the Constitution of the Federal Republic of Nigeria, 1999 to provide for additional.
Who happens to be the largest government in Eboni State and also still returning its originality from the then old Anabra and Enugu town now Eboni State. And of course has about 400,000 registered voters. So on this background, we believe that creation of the poll north and south will bring governance closer to the people and thereby increasing economic development and as well reducing crime, which we know that is as a result of unemployment. Again, we are supporting the move for change of electoral law Epaun de Le to Ebonaka, which historically and by identity, we believe that there should not be difference between the. Honorable members of our House of Representatives, Your Royal Majesties, I greet you today. I stand here to represent the people whose voice are echoed in silence, not for constitutional fairness. People who have been repressed, people who have been subjugated, people who have suffered irreparable losses, not because of their own crime or because they are evils. We are South, South by geographical configuration or by nomenclature, but the real truth is that we are Southeast. We are evil people and I'm an evil man and we're all saints.
The presentation and the quest for Adada. Do you think he deserves to come to fruition? Adada State, thank you.
Adada came prepared. It's a journey we started since 1970. So we were not taken unaware. We started asking it right from Mbanefu Commission in 1970 within the Lady of Boa. In 1979, during the Southern Republic, Senator Zanini moved the motion for the creation of Adada State in the Senate. Honorable Kato moved the motion in the House of Representatives in 1980. In 2000, in 1996, when Abada was about to create a state, he was to create Adada State if not for Dr. Akane Biam, who made a passionate appeal for Eboni State to be created. In 2007, Kenny Namanis assumed president. It was almost a done deal because the Adarami Committee in Uwey. The whole Southeastern leadership recommended.
Adada.
Recommended Adada State. And you vote for the quest for third term. Adada State will not be created. Include any community from where the local government proposed plan. We were rather seeking for the creation of additional two local government area from a present with the local government, who do not local government area, who decide for a local government area and the existing local government area to form in the South Local Government Area only in the state. The three proposed local government will give us, due to local government, the forces of belonging and restoration of our cultural infinity, who the local government today is only completing local government area in Nigeria with the largest population of over 500 existing communities and recognized as well. The over 500 communities we are only enjoying the grass food democracy dividend due to the quality, capacity in the party government, charismatic, visionary and development to lead the governor we have in the person of His Excellency Dr. Fit and Visser, who is in the middle of anti-fodder coverage, has no bounds. God will keep blessing him for us. We therefore urge you to use your good offices to approve the creation of the two proposed additional local government. Obosi stretches from the banks of the River Nigeria upwards. It is a very big puzzle. Why today, Obosi, a town that's large enough, a town that has 10%, over 10% of the entire votes of Anabra State, 100, roughly 180 communities, Obosi has 10% of the votes. Obosi has 15 urban communities. Yes, it is a one goal and it is not a local government. So I'm here to present a memo that is so well written with batch and figures and we are demanding for three local governments in Obosi Kingdom. So please, I want this very memo to be looked into passionately because this is a community that in certain parts of Nigeria may be up to four local governments, but it is now part of a different local government with some other communities. Thank you very much. Enugu, Eboni, Anabra State Command. We are here to make an appeal to this Honorable Committee that NSDC has enormous task and has been performing a functions since inception till date. It is still this national assembly that empowered NSDC to be where it is today and to perform security functions is allowed to perform by law. Our prayer today is that section 214 of the 1989 Constitution is amended, expanded and NSDC, National Security Council of the First Corps, is really enshrined into the Constitution to effectively perform in security duties, especially the protection of critical national assets and infrastructure across Nigeria, among other duties assigned to the NSDC. I so pray, thank you so much. Would the new population of people residing in those areas? And while I'm a bit anxious for, let me summarize by also pointing out that we are in agreement with state police. We are also in agreement with evolution of powers, the total power concentrated at the center. We are also in support of states maximizing their resources by way of deriding and using the transnational supply, more like what we have, more than what we have in the country. And other members of the House of Representatives here present. Another team of national leaders. My name is Oni Abure, Okewu. I'm a member of the Enugu State Assembly, representing the good and awesome people of Enugu this rural constituency. Mr. Tshela, I've come here to make a case on the need for additional creation of local governments in Enugu metropolis. Start on the verbal and court-provoking committee for creation of additional local governments in the metropolis. I have a very vital document here, but because of time, I'm going to rush it to ensure that I give the time. Mr. Tshela, this solution presents a compelling case for the creation of additional local government area areas in Enugu metropolis, grounded in constitutional principles, cooperative operational data and historical liberty. Enugu, a former regional capital and one of Nigeria's fastest growing urban cities, is currently at least by only three local government areas. These have been St. Enugu North, Enugu South and Enugu East. Despite the burgeoning population that now receives only 40 million. The document provides a structural imbalance in Nigeria's local government. Freshman of the Zonay, Southeast Constitutional Reproporting, the Deputy Chairman, the caucus leader Southeast, a role model in Nigeria. All our leaders here who are members of the House of Representatives. I use Enugu State Speaker as point of contact to extend my good wishes and our appreciation to the speakers of your assembly and our traditional rulers from the pre-states. I also want to appreciate the presence of Governor Vukwa, Governor Oji and Governor Krea Admiral Madre. And it's of note that all these three governors, they all come from my, or they come from my constitution, that I represented, an Enugu jury ground, federal constituency. Yes, so I appreciate that and close to show that, you know, how seriously they take this process. Well, my job is brief and it is to present to you bills that have come to the House of Representatives, bills on which they have come for to you for public hearing. It is a matter of statutory level that anything that comes to the house as a deal, as a law, must go to the public for their own side of history, for their views. Members can introduce bills and report certain things. But when it comes to public hearing, members of the public will give their own views. And presently in the house, a number of bills have come, you know, that the house have debated, have passed second reading. In fulfillment of the house rules and of the Constitution, they have come to you for their own review and assessment of what has been proposed. Without this, the process cannot come to a proper conclusion. So this compendium of house bills have been compiled and I am certain that if you are here, there are two papers you will get. There is one that is white in color and then this other one is related to the agenda on the manner of presentation here. But this particular one contains all the bills that have been presented, a summary of all the bills that have been presented to the Southeast Zonay comprising Anabra, Enugu and Eboni States. This compendium of house bills seems to alter the Constitution of the Federal Republic of Nigeria, 1999, as amended, portioned to sections 4, 8 and 9 of the Constitution and under 20, Rule 30 of the Standing Orders of the House of Representatives, 11th edition. And they are categorized as follows, in various thematic areas. The major one is electoral reforms. If you go through the compendium, there are about 11 bills, 12 bills relating to electoral reforms. Some of them are dealing with Electoral Offenses Commission. Is it proper and necessary to have a commission that deals with electoral offenses? Second is, the second one is that it is necessary to have political parties regulatory commission. So that the process that is concentrated from my name. So that there is some level of efficiency, so your views will be heard on that. Secondly is B judicial reforms. A number of bills have been presented to the house, about 21 bills regarding to adjustment of judicial reforms. One of them is should the Court of Abbe be the final court to determine governorship, House of Assembly and National Assembly elections. Should they go to Supreme Court? I know in the previous practice, we had the Supreme Court because Abbe was the final court for that decision. Later on, it was amended to accommodate the Supreme Court. Now there is another bill saying that we should go back to the Court of Abbe being the final court for adjudication. Then in the electoral reforms too, there is also a proposal to have elections on the same day. There is a proposal that makes it possible, if it was adopted, for all the elections, from presidential to governorship, to national assembly, state assembly, elections to be had the same day. Then, then there is also the issue of the legislature. The legislature in terms of representation. What are the desires of our people? Some people propose unicameral legislature, others propose by camera. But it is auspicious to note that representation in the Senate reflects the quality of states. How many are the states you want? Proportionate representation, that is in the House of Representatives. That is why when you come to Enugu, you have eight. In other places, you might have 12, in others, you have seven or six. The idea is that that proportion represents the number of people there. In that regard, would it be proper to have a unicameral legislature? So in addition, you're also looking at inclusive governance. Is it proper that a society should grow up with one hand? Is it proper that we should leave 50% of our population unrepresented? That is where the gender bills come in. To have special seats for women. And in this regard, to avoid a situation where you could become adversary or other members of the public, there is a sunset rule. This special seat for women will last, there is a proposal here that says it will last only for 16 years. So we would want to have your views on, the House would want to have your views on that. Then there are lots of issues of evolution of powers. In this instance, what taxes, what ladies should, local governments, state governments and tougher, which should be responsible for one, to have one multiple translation? And we will appreciate that in the previous assemblies, you may not know that the states have been given opportunity to run their own electricity commissions. If you see state electoral and the state electricity commission has presented in Enugu, it was a matter of removing it from the exclusiveness. Then we also look at allocation. The states can now run issues for them to allocation. You also look at railway. And in this instance, it is to what extent the states have done within. So I think we should take this seriously. Then traditional institutions. There are proposals that should be part of the Constitution and our traditional leaders have also made a strongest example. The governor of Enugu was also forgetting that. Then fiscal reforms. If matters to, to what extent are issues of resources going to be controlled by the states? What to what extent is it going to be controlled by the federal? And to what extent is it going to be controlled by the local government? Then there are other issues of citizenship and indigence. We have recognized or we have observed situations where a woman will be married in a particular community. When it comes to, you know, issues of economy, issues of promotion or issues of ascendance to particular positions, our people begin to claim that we are not from there. So this needs to be settled. Then there are also issues of fundamental rights, you know, that of citizens that needs to be dealt with. Then we have a fundamental, we have local government reforms. We have about 14 bills dealing with this. And in matters to legislative autonomy, administrative autonomy and financial autonomy of local governments. To what extent do we want them to be autonomous? If we want to treat them as a tier of government, that is a issue. So in spirit and letter, if we don't want it, we should maybe want to have your views on that. And there are 14 bills to that effect. Then we have about 46 requests for creation of new states. 46 requests for creation of new states. You will appreciate that in Enugu State, for instance, Adada has given a recurrent request and it is something that in units of people from this state are approved of. Then there are also 117 requests for creation of new local governments. So we want to see what are the processes leading to new local government? Why are you requesting for additional local government? So these are essentially the bills before the house, which have passed the processes and they have come to you to make your views, to have your views on them. Most of these, they will go back, collect them and make their votes for passage and then send to state assemblies.
Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon.
Please, can you tell us your name?
I am Comrade Chief Thophilos Mueke Odoh.
Alright, what constituency or what proposition are you vying for or are you representing here?
Okay, I am the State Chairman of Nigerian National Teachers, Enugu State Wing and I'm representing the National President of Nigerian National Teachers, Comrade Ahudo Titus Ambar.
Alright, thank you so much, sir. It's a pleasure to have you here. So briefly, what's the proposition that you're bringing in respect to the 1999 Constitution review?
Yeah, it's a pleasure that the 10th National Assembly wants to review the 1999 Constitution. We have been expecting that. And the proposal of the Nigerian Teachers is that we are in support of local government autonomy, guaranteeing full democratic assistance of local government as a tier of government in Nigeria. But we want them to start funding primary education, to shift the burden of funding primary education, shift it from local government to state. Because most local government areas, their revenue is highly poor. Their revenue is not steady and not stable and there is disparity in living revenue of local government areas, local government councils in Nigeria. So the state will be in a better position to fund primary education. We know very well that most states are even building schools, that are in charge of building the schools, employment of primary school teachers. But coming to payment of salaries, most local government areas are paying the salaries and we know they cannot do that. So we are asking the National Assembly to pass that bill into law that the primary school system should be thoroughly funded by the state government. Building of schools, employment, payment of teachers' salary, primary school's salary and should be by the state and then paying the pension of retirees from primary school. They are taking care of teachers in secondary school. So why don't they take care of those in the primary schools? They should be taking care of that fully, primary education fully for uniformity. For uniformity, because some will be able to pay, some cannot pay. But what state takes care of that to ensure uniformity and uniform economic development in the country?
Thank you so much for your time, sir.
It's a pleasure, thank you.
My name is Royal Majesty Igwe Sasa Moli Khetuwa Sado Igwe Ogadagidi of the Manuel Obeasan Kingdom, Chairman, Enugu State Traditional Health Council, Igwe de Past Chairman, Southeast Traditional Health Council, and a member of board of trustees, Council of Traditional Leaders of Africa, Nigerian chapter. Thank you.
Thank you. You are blessed.
Yes, I'm Israel Hane, Sigwe Professor, VC Honour, KESM PhD, Zona Financial Secretary, Enugu National Traditional Health Council. You are welcome.
It's a pleasure to meet you, sir. Okay, briefly, I'm just going to ask, what is your stand on the 1999 constitution review that has been held presently? I mean, what do you think its influence is going to be moving forward for Nigerians and for Enugu State people and for the eastern people?
Well, thank you so much for that question. You know, change is constant, change is constant, and we have to accept change. Nigerians are accepting changes, man.
Please, can you tell us your name?
Okay, I'm Dr. Kenneth Okuru, MNI.
Alright.
A consultant pediatrician.
Nice to meet you, sir.
And I'm here for the zona hearing on review of the 1999 constitution by the House of Representatives. And I'm here to present a memo from the National Assistant of Sea Dogs, Pirate Corps, Fatality.
Alright, thank you very much, sir. So what is the content of your proposition?
Yes, as a matter of fact, we appreciate the fact that the National Assembly is making effort to review the 1999 constitution, which to all intents and purposes is not a perfect document. It was delivered by the military with a lot of military psych and Nigerians have been yearning for a people's constitution. So basically, we have identified some areas that we feel should be reviewed or amended so that we can have the full benefits of a presidential system of government. Or in the alternative, perhaps revert to the regional system that we settled with in 1960. So in the areas of the federal structure, we stand for devolution of more powers to the states. At the moment, power is concentrated at the centre. The federal government takes a whole chunk of what goes on in the country, whereas the states, who are, let's say that are closer to the people, are left with just a few. A whole lot of items are in the exclusive legislative list for the National Assembly. And legislation by the state assembly in a matter that is in the concurrent list is also legislated by the National Assembly. That the National Assembly now overrides. So we feel that more power should be given to states. More items from that exclusive list should be devolved to the state to legislate on, so that we have better value for all these positions. Then apart from that also, in terms of fiscal federalism, the chunk of the resources go to the federal government.
That's true.
What is left to the states, it's not enough for the states to live up to their responsibilities. So the revenue derivation formula should be viewed in such a way and manner that more money go to the states, instead of the whole chunk of the money being with the federal government. And like what used to happen in the first republic, when the parliamentary system of government was operated, states, regions had a huge chunk of what is derived from their regions. And there was some kind of healthy competition, because the resources of each region, they maximize it and make a contribution to the centre. But right now, everything goes to the centre and they now just give some handouts to the states. So if we can go back to that, let states maximize their resources and make contributions to the centre, that will be better. A whole lot of states have mineral resources, but it's all federal government, federal government, federal government. So these are some of the areas there. And then of course, the local government should be fully autonomous. Inasmuch as it's not part of the federating units of the federal government, but the local government should have full autonomy.
Please, I'm very well, thank you. How are you doing? Alright, please, can you tell us your name?
Okay, my name is Ozodi Sibesta Ugu.
Alright.
I'm a royal father.
Wow, nice to meet you, sir. Nice to meet you. Sir, please, can you tell us, what title do you hold?
Okay, my title is Tuku Kadibia 1.
Kadibia 1.
Of Okutu.
Of Okutu.
Sukal Local Government Area.
In Enugu State.
Sukal Local Government Area, Enugu State.
Alright, nice to meet you. So I propose that you are also advocating for Addada states.
That's very great, yes.
Alright, so why do you feel Addada states should be given to us?
Okay, thank you very much for this question. It is a very important question. Addada states needs to be created to drive development to the grassroots, that's number one. Number two, Addada state movement is about the oldest since 1979.
Okay, it had been clamoured for since 1979.
Different National Assembly groups. Then thirdly, it is very critical to note that in Igbo land, by the southeast, there is the southeast north and then the southeast south. Under the southeast south, you have states like Abia State, Imo State and Anambra State. Then in the southeast north, you have states like Enugu and Eboni. So for equity, there should be a method of equilibrating. And one word of equilibrating, making it three-three minimum, is to create Addada states.
Alright, thank you so much. I do hope, and we hope, that some way somehow, our pleas will be heard. Okay, before I let you go, what do you think about this constitution review? Do you think that it's a good thing come 2027? I mean, we're expecting elections in 2027. So do you think that this is a step in the right direction for our elections in 2027? Noting that with this constitution review now, a lot of things are going to be changed. We hope that a lot of things are going to be changed. So what do you think about it?
I think that the constitutional amendment process is a good process. When constitutions were actually taken over by Nigeria in 1999, the majority of the realities were not taken into consideration. But now we are seeing a lot of things, we can see something like this security. And we believe that one way of addressing this security is to have state police.
Yes, yes.
Like is obtainable in places like Canada and USA. So I think, and then state creation, driving development to the hinterlands, I think is very important. And I believe that whatever the consequences were, so affect the elections in 2027 positively.
Yes, positively. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Alright, sir. Good afternoon, ma. It's a pleasure to meet you. Please, can you tell us your name and...
Okay, my name is Honourable Lizzie Choba Odom. Lizzie is a short form of Elizabeth. I work as a customary court judge in Anambra State.
Okay, so what's your proposition for the 1999 constitution review?
Why we came here is to remind the honourable members that the lower court judges are not included as judicial officers. What do I mean? They don't get the same remuneration, or remuneration at all, okay? Just like the superior courts, just like the higher courts. For example, we don't have security, adequate security. We don't have, our pay is merely peanuts. And so we want them, because we are the grassroots courts, we deal with the people more. The House of Reps is to the people, what the lower court is also to the people. If you have only the senate, they won't be able to get to the grassroots. It is the House of Reps that get to the constituencies. So we start the process at the lower court, before it gets to the higher court. So they should be able to include us, to give us some... We are not asking that we rub shoulders with the higher court judges, but at least make the condition, our working condition, a little better, little better, yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. God bless.